I'd like to call to order the November 18, 2014, meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. And as always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to join me in prayer. God, we experience Thanksgiving in the coming weeks. Help us to see the blessings that we have and the blessings we may be to other people. This week is National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week in our country. As we are thankful for all the wonderful gifts and assets we have, we must also understand that many Americans do not share in our bounty. Many citizens and their children and grandchildren will go to bed hungry tonight, not be sure where they will sleep, be uncertain about how they will be fed and housed tomorrow. Give us compassion and understanding to work toward helping these families and citizens that have less than we do. Help us to particularly ponder the intact families and citizens who want to do better, but through circumstance and situations can't seem to do so. Our county's only as good as how we treat our weakest citizens. We should not boast of plenty when many Buncombe County residents have nothing. Give us insight and wisdom to discuss policies and laws that help all of us, including some of the forgotten people who have no power, no home, no food, and very little hope. This Thanksgiving season, help us to remember that but for a few turns in our lives, we too could be homeless, hungry, and helpless. And help us to be the best people we can and make the best decisions that help Buncombe County become a better place to live. Amen.
Amen.
Well, next, talk about our ethics rules here. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all Commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable law concerning official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid improprieties in the exercise of their official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing body in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this Board? If none, our state law requires that all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote. So the standards are the direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact or a financial interest in the public contract that we might consider here today. Everything else is mandatory for us to vote. With that being said, we'll go on to public comment. The time limit for comments is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions along with your name, address, phone number, or email with the county manager. Commissioners are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. This is your time to talk with us. And comments should be limited to subjects that are within our jurisdiction or to pertain to matters upon which we may act. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire Commission. It's inappropriate to poll Board members or ask how we might vote on things because this is not what public comment is about. Persons addressing the Board are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and be respectful of everyone in the room. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. And our Board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject that we've previously been presented to, has previously been presented to us or handled in the Board. So, is there any public comment tonight? Yes, sir, in the back. And who wants to go after this gentleman? Yes, ma'am, on the third row. You'll be next. Thank you.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is Timothy Sadler, and I want to start off by commending Commissioner Gant on that moving invocation. Actually, I wanted to mention a meeting that I was recently a part of with the Local Food Policy Council, and that's kind of what brought me out tonight. There's a great program called Feast, and I'm not going to waste my time by spelling out the acronym, but it's really great. And I wanted to point out that this program is happening in part of the county. I believe it's just the city schools that have access to this support. And what Feast does is it gets kids interested in eating healthier and supporting our local economy and encouraging more farming with the land. And so, what they do is, once a week, they visit each classroom of the schools that they're affiliated with and go and work with the kids. And I attended the hub meeting today with the county and the city, and there was a lot of talk about education and how important it is to close the achievement gap here in our public schools. And I would just ask particularly the Republican Commissioners to listen to these folks. Kate Justin is her name, who's the director, and I think it'd be really worthwhile for y'all to hear more about what they're doing and looking to do in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. Yes, ma'am, on the third row. Who wants to speak after this lady? Okay, yes, sir, on the, on the fourth or fifth row. Can't really, can't see too well. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Standard, and I am a registered voter in District 2 of Buncombe County. But where I live is actually a difficult question for me to answer, even though I serve on the Town Council in the town of Montreat. According to my North Carolina driver's license and the Buncombe County tax rolls, I do indeed live in the town of Montreat. However, according to the Buncombe County Board of Elections, they continue to maintain that I, along with all other registered voters in Montreat, do live in the town of Black Mountain. Who knew? And yes, this did cause some problems at the polls during the last elections, and no, I did not really come to speak of this issue at today's meeting. Today, I came to publicly thank each of the Commissioners for your service to the citizens of Buncombe County over the last two years. Mrs. Joyce Hughes of Ridgecrest and I came before you first almost two years ago. Commissioner Frost had not yet been sworn in, and Commissioner Fryer had just been seated. Mrs. Hughes and I came to ask two things of the Board. One, we came to ask your assistance in opposing a 200-acre solar farm proposed on the heavily forested and steep slope of Ridgecrest. This project had already gained considerable traction, having received a certificate of public convenience and necessity from the North Carolina Utilities Commission and an editorial endorsement from the Asheville Citizen Times. You, as a Commission, responded quickly to our request and responded by asking the county staff to investigate. The project was ultimately withdrawn. We thank you and the county staff for making this happen. Two, we came to ask that the Buncombe County Land Use Plan be updated to include policy on renewable energy resources. You, as a body, moved forward on this front as well, and with a unanimous vote, the Commissioners, you approved such an update in January of 2014. This update did not limit the appropriate use of renewable energy, but protected the taxpayers of Buncombe County from unexpected consequences and unexpected costs. Again, we thank you and our county staff for that. Public service as an elected official is not always easy, but what you do and what you have done is important, and often the choices that you have had to make have been difficult. On this issue, you were able to stand and vote as one. Buncombe County, present and future, was well-served by this unanimous action. Again, I close with a public thank you for your leadership and service.
Thank you for your leadership on the Town Council, Mary. I value my meetings every month with Mayor Taylor. We, we hear a lot about the good things you're doing, and we're proud of what Montreat stands for, and thank you.
I'll take that back to the Council.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Who wants to speak after this gentleman? Mr. Rice would be next.
Good afternoon, Chairman Gant and Commissioners. My name is Patrick Irwin, and I reside in District 2. I am here today representing Chain Free Asheville and the citizens who believe that the time is now for Buncombe County to enact an anti-tethering ordinance for dogs. I have now made this request for the fourth time in 2014, the first being nearly nine months ago on February 18th. The most recent was on August 5th. We have made formal requests for our proposal to be placed on your agenda. We have cited many studies and research that confirm that an unattended tethered dog is both a safety issue to the public and inhumane treatment of the animal. We have listed states, counties, and municipalities that have enacted anti-tethering laws, nearly all of them without support groups such as Chain Free Asheville. We have given you the names of Carolina counties that have enacted anti-tethering ordinances that have had no increase in cost to operations and have reduced their number of calls for animal cruelty. We have told you our history of helping the city of Asheville achieve success with their ordinance. We have continually built fences for eligible families in the county since 2008 and are currently in a strong financial position, as well as have a loyal group of volunteer fence builders. We have told you of the endorsements from the Asheville Humane Society and Brother Wolf for our proposal. Frankly, we do not know how to interpret your lack of response to our many requests. Perhaps you've been occupied with the recent elections, or perhaps, since nothing has happened since our initial request, which was nine months ago, that some of you believe that the current ordinance is enforceable and adequate, and therefore condone the action of confining a dog to a 10-foot chain for the entirety of its life resulting in a miserable dog, which could potentially be a safety hazard for the community. I am here alone today, but represent a multitude of concerned citizens who are more than willing to fill your chambers in the future during any public input sessions. We have tried to be respectful of your time, present facts in our arguments, and have been responsive to all actions that you've requested of us. This issue is important and dear to our hearts, and we will continue our efforts until this anti-tethering ordinance is passed. Please do not confuse our approach with a lack of motivation, determination, and support from a large number of your voters. The time is now for Buncombe County to have an anti-tethering ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. It is unlawful to do what you suggested. We can't tether dogs like you do under our current law, but I think you know that, and we'll, we'll be glad to provide copies if you don't have them. Yes, sir, Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I really got a good education in that school of government training y'all had. That's eight and a half hours of video. People ought to go look at that online and just see what y'all need to do. Not that you're doing it, but you need to do. It's a great training. I got a lot out of it. That's the second one I've been in. The ethics statement, Mr. Gant, came right from that training. You did a good job. You listened. The other thing is that the whole Commission didn't even listen to the training. At the end of it, I'd like for people to go and look at the last 45 minutes. Everything that the lady told you to do, you turned around and, and just slapped her. You didn't even use what she told you to do. You need to review the video, and then you might make even a better Commissioner. If I sound like I'm lecturing you, I probably am. If you're going to do training, you need to listen to it and use it. When public comment comes up, bow your head because you need to pray for me. You don't need to look at me, just pray for me. Because when I hear the public comment statement, I sound like somebody giving me my Miranda rights before I've ever done anything, you know? Whatever. Now, let's get on to the real subject. You're here to do one thing, tax and spend, and you're doing a good job of it before, and I'm sure in the next two years, we're going to see some of the worst kind of taxation as well as spending that we've ever seen in Buncombe County. Because when you've got four liberals, I call them, at the helm, and they've got the authority, that's what we're going to see. If you don't like that, this, this look, I think the public needs to be charged to watch, and we're going to see some pretty stiff money spent, big time. On the nonprofits, they come in here and they cut their wrists for $12,000, $5,000 for people to get help, and they have to beg for it. Now, we've got one that wasn't even nonprofit, come in here and got 1.3 for the West Side out at the Inca property, and I'm going to keep saying it, because they wasn't even a nonprofit, and they got 1.3. They are just proposing to be a nonprofit. Then they went to the TDA and got about two more million. Plus, the same group of people that done this, they've got hundreds of thousands even before that with the property out there. So I think if you're going to use nonprofit status, you need to do it fairly and with a policy that is fair to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other public comment tonight? All right, if not, we, in pre-session, we have talked about the agenda. When we adopt the agenda as it's been proposed, we also automatically adopt the consent agenda items. So is there a motion to follow the agenda as we've discussed in pre-session and as it's been publicized on our website and in the media? A motion by Vice Chair Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Belcher. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of following the agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Next, we can move on to good news. Before we do that, I would like to recognize Irwin School Representative, recently re-elected member of Buncombe County School Board, Pat Bryant. Mr. Bryant, it's always good to have you here. I think we already had Councilwoman Standard here, and we have Mayor Jerry Vehan that we'll hear from in a few minutes. Are there any other elected officials here that I've neglected to mention here? Okay, well, thank you for being here. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Brandon Wilson, the Veteran Service Officer for North Carolina Division of Veterans Affairs. He is going to provide us with information on the newest VA Expenditures Report specific to Buncombe County. And thank you for being here, Mr. Wilson. I believe that Region 1 is the 27 most farther west counties in North Carolina. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman, and thank you Commissioners for allowing me to be here. I'm going to talk a little bit about some statistics, and I'm going to give you some real good news here. Prior to 2013, the state of North Carolina, according to the Defense Manpower Act, prior to 2013, had 7,000 veterans returning, making North Carolina their home when they got off active duty, whether it be they were retiring or getting off active duty. 7,000. In 2015, they are projecting that 7,000 figure prior to 2013 will jump to 22,000 veterans returning to North Carolina. That presents a lot of challenges, and that presents a lot of opportunities for Buncombe County and the state of North Carolina with our veterans returning home. More importantly, the challenges of us being able to service them when they return home to North Carolina. With that being said, I do want to applaud Buncombe County Veteran Services. They've done an outstanding job, not only with their outreach, but with their technology. In the wake of what the VA is trying to do, the service office here has become very proactive and are actually doing things instead of being reactive. With that being said, I would like to identify them sitting in the back, and I would like for us to give them a round of applause for the work they've been doing here. Buncombe County has roughly 20,000 veterans as of 2013, according to the Department of the VA. In education, due to the Buncombe County Veteran Service Office and the work they do, $5,632,000 were brought into Buncombe County to their citizens for education purposes. $93,500,000 was brought in for health care. This is tax-free money. Compensation, disability, and pension, $60,714,000. This is a grand total now of $167,375,000 that is being brought to Buncombe County that is tax-free federal money for the citizens here, for their veterans and their family members. This would not be possible if your service office here did not have the support that y'all give them now. I'm going to continue to urge you to support that office, whether it be financially, whether it be allowing them to put on events in your area, but that is very important. I give you these numbers because I know money drives. $167 million is a lot of money being brought here, and that money is being spent in Buncombe County. It's paying their taxes, it's eating at Pax Tavern, it's doing the things that citizens do. On the more important side of that, I do want to let you know that the veterans that are in Buncombe County and across our nation, they raise that right hand so we can have meetings like we're having right now. Freedom is not free, and these individuals and their family members have paid sacrifices for that. So I want to urge you to continue to support Buncombe County Veteran Service Office. Y'all are already doing a good job, but I'm going to continue to push you and urge you. That's my expenditure report. Is there any questions on any of the numbers I've given to you at this time?
Brandon, what was, you said 5.6 for education, 93 for health care. What was the third category? I'm sorry.
Disability, compensation, and pension benefits.
And that's, that's how much?
$60,714,000.
Thank you, sir.
And like I said, it's tax-free money coming from the federal government into Buncombe County. So that brings me to my conclusion of my report here. Like you said before, Region 1 is, North Carolina Division of Veterans Affairs has four regions. Region 1 has 27 counties. This year, as of last year, we pick out an individual within the region that has went above and beyond their capabilities, have done the outreach, have, have went above and beyond their regular job duties to treat and service the veterans of their local community. With that being said, I would like to present an award tonight, and it's for outstanding dedication and service to the veterans and family members of Buncombe County. And on behalf of Governor Pat Mercury, my boss, Lario Pentano, I would like for Ms. Heather Mallory to please come up here and get the Service Officer of the Year Award. That concludes my report, and I think you should all be very proud of what Ms. Mallory has done, as well as the entire staff. But Heather has really went above and beyond, particularly on the technology side, and are moving us in the right direction that the VA is going. So that's my report, and I appreciate y'all having me here.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And I'll echo that. When we were out at the VA, all I heard were good things about our veteran services. They see you, they recognize you. We appreciate you, and most of all, the veterans who you serve. Thank you, the 20,000 that live here. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation of EMS employees. They also have won some awards. And do we have those awards, or who will be? Already received their awards, but let's, let's recognize them. Johnny Wilson has won the Vance E. Key Award. It's presented to local emergency management staff person who demonstrated outstanding achievement in their field. Johnny, if you'll come on down, and we want to thank you formally, and tell us what you do, and obviously you do it well. He's probably wishing he didn't win the award since I called him up. I'm sorry I didn't talk to you before.
No doubt. My job with Buncombe County is Communication Supervisor for 911. My secondary job is Emergency Management, working under Jerry Vehan. And it is a pleasure to represent Buncombe County across the state, as we're called very frequently to be deployed, just to bring a good light to Buncombe County.
And, Mr. Wilson, how many agencies are in that big strategy room that you have there for 911?
On a daily basis, the Buncombe County Sheriff and Nashville Police Department.
And they work together, unlike a lot of other municipalities and areas.
Yes, sir, very well.
Seamless communications. I know, unfortunately, yesterday, I had the unfortunate pleasure to call 911, and I had an immediate response, and I'm eternally grateful. Thank you.
You're so welcome. Thank you.
Let's give Mr. Wilson a hand. And next, we have Mayor Jerry Vehan, also our Emergency Services Director. Jerry won a national award, or the North Carolina Emergency Management Association President's Award that's presented to an individual who has significantly benefited the association during the past year. Jerry, you do it all, and we appreciate you. This, tell us about this. We're proud of you for everything you've done. You've probably got an extra room on your house of all the awards you've won through the years, but tell us a little bit about how emergency services are going.
I think it pretty well speaks for itself, but I want to tell you a little bit what Johnny didn't tell you up there, but of course Johnny is our 911 supervisor for the county and very involved. But he's also the chief of the Urban Search and Rescue Team for the whole western part of the state, and he's available 24/7. Fact of the matter, this coming weekend, he'll be out in, where's that going to be? Jackson County, out on the search. You've been reading in the paper about this boy that's been missing out there for about a week, and going to take some people and some equipment out there, but we stay pretty active, and Johnny has a well-trained group. They started out with a search and rescue team out in the western, far western part of the state, and one for this area here, and they combined them, and Johnny heads all of that up now, but does an excellent job. We try to keep our people trained. Johnny's also a certified emergency manager in the state of North Carolina, and we've got on our staff probably about eight people that have that state certification. If people needed assistance, for example, last week, they had a major fire down in Madison County. They called, they needed what we call an overhead team, people to come down and run operation for them, and who'd they call? They called Johnny. He took some people, they went down there and worked with the fire departments down there. But we believe in mutual aid and helping our neighbors, and same token, if we need them, they're going to come help us, and that's, that's what it's all about, and that's what we try to do, not just on a regional basis, but statewide. Have a hurricane on the coast, we're going to have some people Have a hurricane on the coast, we're gonna have some people from Buncombe County down there working to help those people out. Have a blizzard up here, they're coming to help us. We appreciate what's been done. Incidentally, we, our State Association, where Johnny got this award and where I got mine, we have three other awards, and every award this year came west.
Very good.
So they haven't quite figured out in the rest of the state what we did to do that, but anyway. And I'm glad you're all right, and that 911 worked well for you.
Thank you. Well, Jerry, I would just say this. I think listening to Mayor Vehan, who's also the mayor of Woodfin, talk, you see two things. He's a very humble man, and he gives credit to others, but also, they work and they don't worry about boundaries. They get things done for people. And that's why we have such respect for our local officials and our EMS works so well, because you don't worry about that, and it works out, because like you say, sometimes we need the help, sometimes we give the help. But thank you. I do think that in Jerry's years of services, there are not many awards he hasn't won, and we're just mighty glad you're here, Jerry, and thank you for your years and years of service. Let's give Mr. Vehan a hand. On to public hearings. Number one, we have economic development incentive for Lenamar. I think we have Mr. Frew is gonna talk to us about this incentive agreement, and we will have a public hearing afterwards.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the third time we've been before this board, or Lenamar's been before this board, making requests for economic development incentives. First one was in 2011, where the company bought the old Volvo plant and began manufacturing mainly for Caterpillar and Volvo blocks and large construction vehicle equipment. That agreement was promised an investment of at least $125 million and 400 new jobs into Buncombe County by the end of the year 2020, and the county's incentive payment for that will total $6,800,000. About two years ago, Lenamar came to the county and to the city, and they're proposing doing a third building out there on site, a new building with a new project. They're proposing 250 jobs and $75 million investment. That project did not come forward, and they've revised plans and have a new business model to proceed, and they want to, what we're here today for is an amended and restated number-two lease agreement, or incentive agreement. No payments were made under that second Lenamar deal. This will replace it, and what this project promises to invest $190 million between now and the end of the year 2021, and create an additional 400 jobs. So that'd be 800 total jobs that are promised by the end of 2021 by Lenamar in the community. The incentive agreement promises that the county will pay $9 million to Lenamar over a period of six years, beginning in 2015. Now that, and what Lenamar will do will be a phased expense, and if I can ask Judy to put up that first graph that she has. Yes, that one. That shows the years, shows 80 new jobs in Buncombe County in 2015, then an additional 152 jobs in 2017, and that's an additional 72 for a total of 152. Step up for more jobs to 360 total by the end of 2019, and 400 jobs by 2021. And what that graph also shows is, and this is where the county really gets its return on this incentive investment, when you get 80 jobs, let me flip my page. When you get 80 jobs paying at least $39,000 per year, that has an indirect effect for other new jobs in the community of 63.3 new jobs. When you have that many new jobs, 143 new jobs, there are more wages in the community, more money to spend, so they have a supply and demand issue which has that induced effect jobs. So there's a number of new jobs that come along with the 400 new jobs. So at the end of the day, in 2021, that's seven, eight, over 900 new jobs in the community, 400 directly for Lenamar. The other graph, Judy, please, shows how the investments were made over time, 20 million next year, and a total of 190 when we get to the end of 2021. Now, the graphs on the bottom show where the Buncombe County will benefit from these new jobs at at least $39,000 per year excluding benefits. So you have the direct effect of those new jobs, cash in those employees' hands, the indirect effect for new jobs in supply and demand chain, and the respending of those new jobs for induced effect and local tax. Now, all those lines together go, they look like they hit about the $20 million line down there at the end. But what you do at the end of the day, those add up to be over $90 million benefit to Buncombe County by 2021, and they'll surely keep that in place for some years beyond. Also point out in the incentive agreement itself, that there are clawback provisions such that if Lenamar fails to meet the 400 jobs as promised, or fails to make the incentive expenses as promised, then there'd be proportionate payback to Buncombe County, such that if they don't do anything, of course, Buncombe County would get all its money back, or wouldn't have to pay any money, but our limit would be up to a maximum of $9 million. We have with us today Heather Smirchina from the Home Office of Lenamar for this division, and Tom Grind, the local manager for the facility. So if you have any particular questions for what this project is, or what this investment is about, I'm sure they'll be happy to answer those questions. If there's any questions for me regarding the incentive agreement, I'm here too.
Okay. Before our public hearing, are there any questions for Mr. Frew or the Lenamar representatives?
Do we have time to talk after?
Yeah, and we'll take comments afterwards also. Yes, sir.
I do have one question. I think I found the answer, but the graph?
Yes, sir.
Where it shows a jump from 15 to 17 is the big job jump?
Yes.
Okay, and then on another graph, it's also the big investment jump?
Yes.
So is that when the second? I mean, I've been listening good. Is that when the second building occurs? What triggers that big jump? Which is?
Perhaps Mr. Grind or Ms. Smirchina could better answer it, but that's just the business plan for the investments and creation. It doesn't, they don't plop it in all at once. They have to creep up the business plan over time to meet the needs of their clients.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions before we start our public hearing? And we'll give a shot afterwards to do that. If none, then I'll declare the public hearing in the Lenamar Economic Development Incentive Package open at 5:07 PM. Any members of the public wish to be heard on this incentive proposal? Mr. Rice? Any other member of the public wish to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's kinda perplexed for me here. Lenamar's been here before, good company. AB Tech should be the wheels that helps these folks get good employees, but I don't think that's happening, not to the extent, even not just them, but others as well. On these incentive packages, I'm not a fan of it. When multimillion-dollar companies has the money to do things, and they come to local taxpayers to get money, I don't think that's a good idea. But $39,000, including benefits, what I heard, if they're making $39,000 and then have benefits, that'd be a different story. But if I heard this wrong, it don't sound like a good deal to me. If you can't keep people out of social service even making $39,000, don't sound too good. And the other thing that bothers me is about these incentives, is where the people are coming from to have these jobs. Now, we want to talk jobs regional, yes, but taxpayers of Buncombe County are Buncombe County taxpayers. I'd like to know how many people from Buncombe County is actually having these jobs, and where they're coming from? Because I get around pretty good, and I don't think that companies that we're giving incentives to, they're to be Buncombe County residents. And if we ain't got AB Tech wound up where they can do the job training that they should, then we need to be looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other public comment on the Lenamar incentive proposal? If there are none, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 5:10.
And Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna point out that it's an average compensation of at least $39,000 per year, so benefits would be additional.
Additional? That's big. All right. Are there any questions from the board to Mr. Frew or the Lenamar officials about the proposed resolution?
Since the question was asked, I don't want to put a, you know, if you don't have a hard number, don't worry about it. But just in general, the hiring, is it pretty much local, most of the hiring?
I'll ask Mr. Grind to come up.
Make an answer to that question?
You'll come on up.
That'd be great. Come on up.
Good afternoon.
Howdy.
Most of the hiring is local, and we are joined with AB Tech, where AB Tech is actually formulating training programs based on our particular machining need, and then a lot of our employees will go through their costs at AB Tech before they even start with us. So most of the hiring is done here.
I know a couple of us had an opportunity to go out and look at the GE, the training there that's being done for the carbon matrix components, and it was pretty impressive. So I'm glad to hear that all of Air Advance Manufacturing locally is working very closely with AB Tech, and that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Grimes, while he's up.
Well, I had, when I first came on the commission, I so happened to get appointed to AB Tech Board, and myself and two people from AB Tech went to Lenamar and talked to the people out there, and you had the second building, and you said you had to have maintenance people to try to be able to sell the building. And we've been working very hard on that. Duke has come across with $250,000 for some equipment at AB Tech, I think, which is great. And we have a line there for people to learn how to work on some of the equipment that's in the business in the building. So the people from AB Tech kept asking me, "How's it going? How's it going?" Well, I couldn't tell them how it was going, because at the time, we just wasn't supposed to tell them. But I know everybody's happy now. I'm happy that we have a different path, you know, four-month path. These people don't need two years' worth of education to be able to fix some of the equipment you got. Yeah, probably some of it's gonna be more technical than they can work into it, but I think, once you get the building full, and if you can add on, you know, I'm totally for this deal. I understand it's $9 million, but I got one small issue, is that we're changing things at the house, and we're $9 million right now, and I don't want to see an issue come back from the state that they can't come forward with their money. I just want to make sure Lenamar stays with us. That's, you know, if something happens in that respect, I just, I would prefer that we stay on our program, city can stay on their program, and we can be a good steward to your company.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that there's always some opposition to county commission doing economic incentives. But we live in the real world, and the real world is where you have South Carolina, Tennessee, Georgia, and other states throughout southeast who are competing for these jobs and these plant expansions. And if we stand on a ill-thought-out principle of not doing this, then we will lose these jobs as well as the expansions. So it's an investment in the people of Buncombe County, it's an investment in the tax base, and it's a good plan, because we compete in the market just like everyone else. Counties are out there trying to take away what we've got and keep us from getting it. So also, above and beyond all of these so-called political ideologies and principles, are the people of Buncombe County who live here and who need jobs, and in some cases, as would have been with GE, those jobs would have left, and they would have been without a job. So this commission, I'm proud of the work it's done in putting forth economic incentives to keep Buncombe County a viable place to live.
Well, that sounded like a motion for approval to me.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner King, a second by Commissioner Jones. Is there any further discussion?
Just want to say one thing.
Yes, sir. Mr. Commissioner?
And I think I heard this right. For an additional $2.2 million, 6.8 was committed to before. For additional 2.2, you're doubling the jobs. You're going for 400 additional jobs.
This is a whole new incentive.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And as a byproduct, let me quote a statistics from our Chamber of Commerce. For every 100 jobs that are created in Buncombe County, there is a $10 million spinoff into the county as a result of every 100 jobs. So with 400 additional jobs, that's $40 million a year roughly spinoff into Buncombe County. So I'm not very good at math, but that seems like a good trade-off to me.
All right. Is there any further discussion on this incentive package? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the resolution as proposed by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Jones, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion carries seven to zero. I would ask the court to, I mean, well, I see Judge Pope, I'm looking out there, and that's part of the motion. I would ask that this board consider taking the capital request. Judge Pope is here, and Mr. Williams is here from the DA's office. Take that out of order. That would be something we'd all have to agree on, but would that be acceptable to this board to go ahead and do that before we did the others? Any objection to that? Okay. Let's call Mr. Williams and Judge Pope up to talk to us about this capital request from the courts.
Thank you very much for that. I'm Al Williams from the DA's office. Judge Thornburg would like to have been here today, but he's tied up in a trial in another county that's not as nice as Buncombe County. But we just wanted to talk to you about requests that we've had for some additional assistance with our courtrooms. As you all know, we have probably the most beautiful courtroom in the state on the fifth floor, and however, it's very large, and when you get jurors in there and you get noises, it's hard to hear. And what we've noticed the last couple of years is we've had problems with noise and things like this, so that we needed to upgrade that courtroom. And so part of the request that we met with county staff, and I can't thank you all enough, not just for this, but for all the experience we've had with county staff, especially IT, for all they've done for us. And again, they came over, I saw Brian here earlier, Dillingham, but met with us and the judges, and we told them what we wanted, what we thought we needed to allow us to have trials that everyone could hear and see the exhibits and things like this, and together they came up with a plan, and I think that's what you have today. I've talked to the county manager. But we just wanted to say to you that if you have specific questions, but I think if you go to Haywood County and some of the surrounding counties, some of these folks have this equipment which makes it easier for jurors to see the evidence, easier for everybody to follow what's going on, it's easier to keep a record of it, because as you all know, you know, sometimes it's often reviewed what we do over there. And so this, while we realize it's not a small thing, we think that it's something that in keeping with, I think, the reputation of Buncombe County, which is, I think, one of the best judicial systems in the state. And personally, that's in no small part due to the help that we get from Wanda Green, Mandy Stone, and John Creighton. Just throw that in. They have been there for us many, many times, and it helped us in many ways. But that's all I wanted to say, and Judge Thornburg, again, thanks you for considering this, and I know Judge Pope probably has some specific comments too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you for your use of service.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you've ruined us. The judicial complex is fantastic. When that project started, I was wondering how it would fit into the old courthouse that I have loved since 1973, and you did a wonderful job. On the third floor, you put in a courtroom which is completely modular. On the third floor, you put in a courtroom which is completely modernized and is even more efficient than the courtrooms in Mecklenburg County and Haywood County and Gaston County, where I have served. The courtroom on the third floor makes the efficiency of the court just fantastic, because we can present exhibits all at one time. The judge approves the exhibit before the jury ever sees it. If there's an argument, we can discuss it and handle it right there, and then simultaneously, if it is approved for the jury to see, then everyone sees it at the same time. It makes everything very quick and very speedy in the judicial economy that we try to accomplish, and I thank you for that. The seventh floor and the fifth floor need these additional IT advantages. Everyone loves the fifth-floor courtroom. As Mr. Williams said, it is the most beautiful courtroom in the state. In fact, whenever I bring a jury into the courtroom, it takes about five minutes for me to get their attention to tell them what we're going to do with them as a jury, because they're looking up at the ceiling and are just bewildered by the beauty of that courtroom. But if we have these improvements, it's going to help the auditory and the visual effects for the trials and move the trials along. But I want to thank you, I have had three trials in the new courtroom and look forward to having many more in the fifth floor and seventh floor. So, thank you very much, I'd, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge Pope. Are there any questions? The request, as I read, it is for a $232,883 allocation to set up this entire system, turnkey, get everything in there, and get it ready for jurors to use and participate in the, in the, as soon as it's installed. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Are there any questions about this?
Question or comment?
Either one, yes, sir. Question or comments, good.
For Ms., Ms. Green. The ID, IT department handled this, I'm sure, you know, I just had the IT department bail me out, you know, 15 minutes before the meeting, so, you know, we know they're capable, we know they do a great job. I'm sure they've shopped this and all that, that all the stewardship has been done, you know, as far as getting, you know, getting the most for money. And the second thing is, that's, this is included in the budget, is it?
Well, the first part of the question, the answer to that is, they did put this together, and they'll work with construction to get it installed into the courthouse. No, this is a, an appropriation of fund balance, because it's not something that's included in the budget.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Hmm, that's the question that I basically had, is, I've, I've had talks with another judge on other items, and from what I understood, it needed to be brought forward this December so it could go to, in our January meeting, for, to be funded in the next budget. We've run our fund balance up pretty good so far, so, you know, I don't know if you can do without it for six months, but if you could, we'd appreciate, I'd appreciate it a lot, because I can't get into adding another 200,000 here, 60,000 there, and, and keep asking the staff to figure out how to find money to bring us back to a normal budget. So, that's, that's all I asked, is if it can be presented, and we can bring it into the next year's budget, and I'm sure we all want, I do, I want to, but bringing things in the middle of the year when it's, we don't have the money basically there to fund it and have them move, take it out of fund balance, I, I can't go that far, Judge, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. We are getting along without it, and if it needs to wait six months, we, we're glad to do that. We just want to make it the most efficient courtrooms in the state of North Carolina. And whatever you need to do is fine, we would appreciate it now, but if we can't do it now, then I understand that too. But whenever we can, we, we would like to have it.
We know it's here, we know the other issues out there, so I think all of us want to make sure the courts have what they need, but I, right now, I can't, honestly, myself, I can't do it on the taxpayers' back in this, so I'd like to try to do it in the next budget session.
I understand, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Are any other comments or?
I will just say that I was fairly well convinced of the, the value of this, just in terms of the improvement of the courtroom experience and just justice being better heard. But, but then, when you talked about the efficiency of the, of the courtroom, that really got my attention, because, I mean, the, you know, I know the stories that we all hear about, you know, the backlogs and things taking time, and, and, and it's, it's whatever side you're on, and you're in, in the, in a courtroom setting, I mean, it's stressful too. So, I think any way that we can make that process a bit, a bit, a bit more efficient, I'm all for, and I'm for, I'm for doing it now, because I think that we're just going to make the line even longer in the back when, when we can, we can address it, you know, six months quicker, it's not seven. So, you know, I respectfully understand where other commissioners might be coming from, but I feel that that would be money in our savings account, a one-time expenditure that I think is, I don't, I don't know of a better expenditure, frankly. So, I think that's why you have savings account, is for times like this, when you have these, these one-time needs, and as opposed to recurring thing, that's a different situation. So, I, I kind of have a little ta, a different take on that, and I would be supportive of appropriating this money at this point.
I'd like to second that and add that, as good as you all are, people going to court, it's not a good day for most of them, and if they can't hear, and you can't hear, and it makes it more efficient, then I'm fully supportive of this. And to wait six months seems almost cruel and slowing down the system, so I'm fully supportive.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
So, do we have, did we get a first and second?
Yeah, I, I took Commissioner Jones's comments as a motion and a second by Vice Chair Frost.
So, can I take a stab at friendly amendment, because I'd like to support this?
Yes, sir, you can.
So, would it be, would it be possible to, in response, in to Mike's comments, in your comments, would it be, would it be possible to go ahead and do this book and with, with Ms. Green, working with the courts, to determine when, when is the best time, you know, to make sure, because it may not be six months, maybe four months, maybe three, it's going to take a while to get this done anyhow, right? And it's not something that's going to happen tomorrow, you know, but is, is it possible to be able to, to use that discretion? Would that be okay with you, Mike, as long as it goes out far enough to make sure that the money is there, that we're not, you know, putting ourselves in a difficult situation? Would that, would that be okay? Would that work for?
I, I tend to think it would. I mean, I think it goes without saying, but that I, you know, would defer to the county manager's expertise in kind of how to make the cash flow work. I just don't want to send mixed messages to, to you, so I, I'm, so I'm definitely open to that, but I don't want us to take a vote and then you say, "What'd y'all say?"
Can I ask a question about that, toward Commissioner Veltre and Commissioner Jones' comment? Does this, if we did allocate this in full now, would this affect our bond rating? Would this affect our fund balance to the point of detriment overall in the, in the big scheme of things?
It would not affect our, our bond rating. I mean, obviously, we have to figure a way to save some additional money, and I can't tell you today what that would be. Two questions I would have. One is, will the price go up in the next six months? That would be my first question. The second is, if we're going to do it anytime before June 30th, you, it would be good to just go ahead and take action on it. By delaying it till next year, you really wouldn't vote on it until June in the capital plan, so my first concern would be, how much will the price go up in the next six months?
I'm, I'm a little unclear what the friendly amendment is.
The friendly amendment would be to, to, to use the discretion of the county manager to make sure that when we do access this money, that it's accessed at the appropriate time, and because I think it's important, you know, we want to be able to do this at the lowest possible price that we can, you know, we want to make sure we're being a good steward of, of the county's money, and I think that's what Commissioner Frye is trying to do also, but, and so that-
See, I think that's fine in terms of, you know, with the discretion being, you know, cost, you know, best use of dollars, dollars now, dollars later, and, and sooner rather than later, in terms of the efficiency issue, so, but I, I think that, I think that's fine. Does that, do you, I mean, do you feel direction from that?
Not, not clear direction. I'd rather know today that I need to find another $232,000 than know in April. That, that's a challenge for us if we wait a lot longer. We will be good stewards of the money, we will find, we'll make sure that we got the lowest cost. Technology is an increasing commodity, I mean, it, the price of that increases, so if we're going to do it, I don't want to contradict anyone, but just about soon, go ahead and do it tonight.
So, so Joe, I think that, I appreciate the spirit of your, your friendly amendment and wanting to kind of get us on the same page. We were listening to our training, but I think, you know, for, to be clear to the public and to be, give clear direction to staff, that I probably won't, I don't think that's, I don't, I think that muddies the water a little bit, so.
I have a question for Judge Pope. Now that we have debated this issue and this technology, does this open the door for some trial attorney to come back, let's say, that's in front of you and say, "Oh, well, my client didn't get a fair trial because the technology wasn't present to, you know, someone didn't understand fully, et cetera." Being, not being a jurist, I'm, I'm way out of my, I'm drowning, I guess.
That's been considered before, and that has not been an issue on that particular point, no.
But we hadn't debated it before, that's what I'm asking.
No, no, I don't, I don't think so. Do you disagree, or you think?
No, I mean, years ago, we've had a, an issue where defendant claimed after his trial that he didn't hear went, went on, and we had to have about a five-day hearing about whether he heard what went on in his trial. So, I mean, people will file whatever they want to file, but, you know, I don't think what we do here tonight directly affects that, we can't control what people file.
Oh, oh, no, no, I'm not worried about trolling, I'm worried about if, if it does happen, that's not free to the county, that's going to cost. And I guess rhetorically, I'm asking, is that a, you know, a financial, what is the financial impact?
I, are you, are you asking, will there be a financial impact if this is not-
If someone chooses to use this as a defense.
If someone chooses to use this debate as to whether or not the equipment should be installed, is that a financial impact to the county?
If we don't install it, if we don't move forward.
If you don't install it, no. I don't think that's an issue at all.
Okay.
Because this is more technology. What you see is, these folks have quite a bit of technology at home from video games and everything else. They come into the courtroom, and they do not see that, and it takes more time to present evidence and things like that. But it, it's not going to be anything prejudicial to a defendant that would come back that I can see to the county. As Mr. Williams stated, we see folks file stuff all the time, and I never cease to be amazed by some of the things that, that folks file, but I don't think this is a detriment to the county.
No, no, I don't mean, you tell, maybe you and I are not on the same page, but I'm not talking about the installation, I'm talking about not doing the installation.
I would have the same response, if we didn't do the installation, I don't think that's going to reverberate with the county.
All righty. We, we did discuss this at our retreat, the way I came down after our retreat was that I would entertain a amendment that has been proposed and seconded to an, to an original motion, and then vote on, and then if that amendment is attached to the motion, we vote on the motion. Is that, is that agreeable? I think, we talked about both ways, but I believe this is still the most efficient way, but-
But the amendment has to have a second.
Yes, the amendment has not had a second yet, and let me state, make sure I state that first, and the amendment, as I understand it, was, is to delay immediate payment and have gradual payment on the account, is that right?
Well, and I tell you, really what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to figure out a way to do both, okay? And I'm not doing a really good job at it, I'll concur with that, but I'm trying to figure out a way to do both, you know, whether it's, you know, if there was a way to, to add this money, because I, I think that, you know, there may be a time when you come in and ask for more money, you know, there may be other needs, you know, for the, for the courthouse. We may need to update some other things. Is there a way to go back and, you know, in the, the original note, is there a way to, to look at other ways of doing it and give them what they need now? That's what I'm trying to say, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, okay?
Because I think those are mutually exclusive things, if they're, if you're trying to, to do both, get it immediately and wait to July 1st, that-
No, I didn't say, no, I'm not saying wait till July 1st, I'm saying-
But that's what he's saying, in terms of right.
But I, I don't think-
Try to get closer into the budget, because there's one more issue that's part of this deal, if I can speak in just a-
Yes, sir. Commissioner Frye, go ahead.
I, I had a meeting with Judge Hill, just talking to him, and he, you know, I understood that Mr. Thornburg and them wanted to do the electrical part. Well, he wants to do the fourth-floor courtroom, so we're looking at more dollars, and then the way that it was brought to me was that both judges could present their stuff in December, before December, so that we could look at it when we met in January, to make a decision on what we wanted to do. But there's, there's more than this one issue at the courthouse at the present time. So, you know, if this got here before, I thought that they had to have their stuff in before December, both of them, so that it could be looked at when we have our meeting in January, to, to try to come up with the budget. So, you know, maybe I'm totally off, off where I'm going, but, you know, one wants a courtroom fixed, and the other judges want some technology in the courtroom, so.
Dr. Green?
The capital request did come in a couple of weeks ago, and both of these requests came in, or I'm, I'm pretty sure Judge Hill's came in also, and it will be in the capital plan that you see in, in January. This specific plan, Judge Thornburg asks that we start the construction on this before the end of '14. Now, I don't think we can get it started before the end of '14, but there was some indication that he had a greater need for this to go in first, so that's why it made it onto the agenda when it did, is his, his request for it to be considered well in advance of next year's budget.
But there's no expectation of an additional budget amendment for judicial capital-
Not in four-
For the next budget?
Not, not in the current fiscal year. It would be something we would include for the budget that will begin July 1st.
Thanks.
So, this would seem, can I maybe enhance, clear, tighten up your friendly amendment?
Take a shot at it.
What if we were to say that, you know, we're asking the county manager to go forward with this immediately, but at the most expeditious price, as she always does, but if, you know, I don't know about, but to go the most prudent way, but go forward immediately, would that be?
Well, and that's part of it, so I want to say, first off, that, and it is maybe going too, too long, but number one, I want, number one, I want to approve this, okay? Number two, I also want to make sure that future requests coming regarding the courthouse, that it be, that we have some sort of, you know, we're, you know, we know that we're going to have quarter million dollars every year, we know we're going to have enhancements, we're not going to have things, you know, and that be part of the budget. And I think that's the direction that, that Commissioner Frye is going, and so, you know, I, I want to say this, is that I want to support this, but going forward, and if, if this is a way of changing, then I want to make sure that, that future requests, that if possible, that we can receive them so that they can be considered in the budget, so that we can make enhancements that we're going to have to probably do possibly annually, you know, for the courthouse. It's, it's going to be a living building, there's going to be upgrades, there's going to be things, you know, there's going to be changes that need to be made to equipment, and, and, you know, so I want to make that statement for the benefit of everybody on the board, that that's where I'm at on this, that I would like to support it, and I'm trying to, you know, pull Mr. Frye's, you know, concerns in also, in that, in the, that we, they understand in the future that there'd be, you know, these things be worked into our budget, so that we can, we can continue to make sure that our courthouse is, gives the fairest possible presentation and, and for the, those that are, that are, that are on trial, as well as those that are listening. And I think that's very important, but also would like to see it worked within our current structure, so it makes these things a little bit easier.
I certainly hear that, and, and we will work hard to, to do this as economically as possible, and certainly, it's easier when you have all requests in front of you, so that you can look at the competing needs, and the, the reason this one did wake the agenda is because of Judge Thornburg's specific request.
I understand.
We-
Is that, yeah.
That would not be our normal action.
Okay. How about this, Board? Why don't we, would you consider a friendly amendment that- Why don't we, would you consider friendly amendment that, uh, we, we go forward with this and also ask the judges and other courthouse personnel to make every effort to include all future courthouse expenses into the normal budgeting process so that we have a better understanding of what the budget should be each year? Would that be something that we could consider?
Yeah, but say it very, very nicely because they're the judges. They can pretty much ask us what they want, when they want. And, uh, you know, my experience was with the, the folks on the benches that they try to do that. And this is, this is an exception and maybe everybody needs a very gentle, very polite reminder. But at the end of the day, your honor gets to ask and we get to say yes or no.
But in one other part I would point out, and this is on the resolution, or on the proposal. It does say the proposal was submitted in December 2013. And we believed, the judge, Judge Thornburg believed it was included in the budget for the year ending June 2014. Having heard nothing and seen no progress, we are resubmitting the proposal.
Okay.
So, I think, I think there was an effort. You didn't just come out and say, we want it right now, so give it to us. He did submit it last year. Somehow we, I don't know what happened, but we didn't get it in our budget. We didn't, uh, and, and so it has been a year since you made your initial proposal. Is that right?
Yes, in fact, uh, we've spent a great deal of time with the IT folks going over the actual mechanics of how to do it. And then nothing was done for a while. And that's when, uh, we started, um, asking, uh, questions about what would be the next step.
Well, I, I think the need is there, so I'm going to support the need, so.
Uh, I'm not going to support that because Dr. Green has indicated she needs to know earlier rather than later. And I think we just need to move forward with it. We know that Dr. Green will work with the courts on this and, and it will be done as in, uh, the best way possible to the taxpayer and to the court system. So, I, I don't think we need a, an amendment.
All right, sir. Okay.
Can you reread the amendment?
Commissioner Belcher, do you, I, I would just ask, is there, we have, we had a proposed amendment. There was not a second. I'll ask if there's any amendments to the original motion made by Commissioner.
Mr. Frost, what was your amendment?
Jones.
No, no, I, I, no, no, I was not getting involved in the amendment. I was just trying to be helpful with some language. I'm not involved in the amendment.
Okay, does anyone want to make an amendment this then?
Um, I guess, I guess this is still a, still a friendly amendment that we, we support the, the need. Uh, and that going forward, we, um, uh, we, 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 we work to receive this as early as possible, time so that we can work it into our budget. That's pretty simple.
Okay, there's been a, a, a proposed friendly amendment. Is that acceptable?
Dr. Green? Is that clear or, I mean?
I think I.
What would, what would your takeaway from that?
My takeaway from it right now is, uh, some pretty clear direction. It would be better if we had all of our budget amendments come in, I mean, requests come in at one time so we can consider them in the whole. And, and I think that's good direction to staff and good, good response for us to have when people are making requests. Uh, so I, I do hear that instruction to us, um, in that amendment, and that's the main thing that I hear.
And you, and you, and the other stuff's not foggy or cloudy about what to do with this actual expense that we need to do?
That, that's my read on the, the amendment. And then my read on the original, um, motion was to fund it.
All right, does it, does that give you what you need to, to get this in the, in the budget in a, in a timely manner that will work for staff?
It gives me what I need for today and for the future in response to.
Okay, Mr. Frye, will you restate, do you, are you able to restate it?
I, I think the motion is that, uh, to approve this motion, but make sure to request that any future requests come through the normal budget cycle.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, I've been, I've been, I've been, I've been trying to stay out, but, um, just. But I, I mean, I think what we're saying is we're asking this and that's the ideal. But, I mean, things do come up and I do not want it to be communicated that we're, we are saying that you cannot bring things to us. It's just the ideal is part of the normal budget, but, so just, so just the semantics of that, that language. Let's make sure we don't make it too.
That's right.
And I, I have, I, I agree with Commissioner. I have a problem, um, and, you know, I don't want to compare the judges and what they may ask for my granddaughter for asking for a pony. You know, this is very serious. They are not going to be frivolous. They're not, you know, this is serious stuff and stuff happens. If something happened to the elevator in, um, on August 1st, are we going to have to wait until the next budget cycle to fix the elevator? So, you know, I, I think this.
Then just put the word preferred in there, okay? Just put the word preferred and we're fine. Preferred, right?
Yep.
So, we got agreement here, we got agreement here. That should, that should do it. Is that right? Preferred.
That the motion as amended would be that to approve the request, but the preferred method would be to do it through the budget cycle.
That, that preferred would be to handle these things in the budget cycle. Preferred.
Preferred.
Okay? So, that means they can come at any time and it is, and ask for whatever they want to ask for.
Okay, there's, yes, ma'am.
Could I say one last? One is I, I want to thank them for asking in our, in our normal form on the agenda and go through the process. Eighteen years ago, we were delivered with a court order to do it. And so, this is a much different environment and we appreciate.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I want, I want to say thank you for that. So, uh, you know, there's just, uh.
I'm, I'm going to vote against this. I think we're micromanaging. We need to move on, but.
Yes, let's move on.
That's one commissioner's opinion. There's been a, is there, there's a motion for the, to amend to say it's a preferred method as stated by a county attorney. Is there a second to, we're going to vote on the amendment first and we'll vote on the overall motion. Okay. Is there a second to the motion to, Commissioner Belcher's motion about, uh, to approve, but, uh, say that needs to be a preferred method in the future to do it by the normal budget cycle? Is there a second to that amended, that, that request?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a second. So, we will vote on the amended. This is on the language that Commissioner Belcher has made a motion and Commissioner Frye has seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment only? Then we're going to vote on the, uh, Commissioner Jones's overall motion to approve it, uh, right now. Okay? Any other discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the amendment as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll oppose no?
No.
Oh.
No, okay, the, the noes habit. I counted, uh, Commissioner Belcher and Frye and Newman, yes. And the other four, no. Is that correct? Okay, so that, the amendment fails. Now, we have a motion before us to approve the full amount as requested by Judge Thornburg. Is there any, any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose no. Then that motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, so we will go back to our public hearings. Thank you for that indulgence and thank you, gentlemen, for your public service. Economic development incentive for PolyLink. We have Mr. John Creighton to talk to us about this incentive agreement.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, I want to talk to you tonight about an incentive grant for PolyLinks. PolyLinks is a local manufacturer. They manufacture plastic parts for the biotech and life science industry here in Buncombe County. Uh, they've been located in, in our county since, uh, 1995. Back in 2011, I was approached by, uh, Tim Lampkin with the EDC, Economic Development Coalition of the Asheville Chamber, about a possible expansion of PolyLinks. At that time, they were proposing a $2.3 million expansion, hiring an additional 12 people at an average compensation of $35,800. And at that time, uh, we offered a, a $25,000 incentive, uh, for that investment. Happy to report that we verified it through our tax department, that they've made at least the $2.3 million expansion. And they do have proof that they've hired, uh, additional 12 people at a minimum compensation of, of $35,800. Just to talk, just a little bit about a return on investment like, uh, Mr. Frye did a while ago. Judy, first slide please. If you, we're doing a one-time incentive grant of $25,000. And if you look at that with the direct annual effect being the, the way, the 12, 12 times the 35,800, gives you that salary of, of $429,600 a year. You add the indirect and the induced and the local taxes on that, that's just $9,000 short of $800,000 return we get off of that $25,000 investment. Also, if you look at the number of, of jobs, being the 12 jobs of the next slide, those 12 jobs really create 19 and a half jobs. So, I think as, as Commissioner King said that, okay, once you create one job, it rolls through the county or through the economy, whether additional jobs or additional wages or indirect or induced wages. So, uh, just like I say, a small expansion really has a big impact. And like I say, I'm talking about one here when I'm, one year when I talk about almost $800,000 return. But that keeps happening year after year. Obviously, wages change and taxes change, but, you know, th- those numbers keep, keep growing, uh, year after year. I would like to ask, uh, Joe Maska with PolyLinks to come up and just say a few words about his company and his expansion.
Wow. Guess I'm not used to the limelight. We came 18 years ago, just two people. And, uh, I can't believe that, uh, I'm standing here now. And, uh, I feel good about our company. We, uh, I think everyone is from Buncombe County or some surrounding county right here. We feel included. We feel like we make a, a good product that helps people. I'll mention a few. We, we, uh, we helped Beckton Dickinson recently in the last couple of years to develop the newest safety pen for insulin injections for clinicians. So, it'd be used in a hospital, not at a home. So, protect them from any, uh, transmission of diseases or something. We, uh, we work on devices that, uh, screen, uh, people for breast cancer. We, uh, we help to diagnose the different strains of influenza and then suggest or recommend treatments based on the genetics of the person. We, uh, we, we've, we've worked on devices that will detect anthrax and for our military people to, to keep them safe in, in, in their duty. We were, finished up a project a couple of years ago on, uh, genetically screening newborn children for birth defects. It's, it's a national law, but, uh, we've been able to speed up that process and reduce the cost of what it takes to do that screening by nearly 100%. All these are not our projects or not the, the brainchild, but, but we help to, um, to make them become a reality, to commercialize them and to, to get them in the hands of people. Our current, uh, endeavors, uh, right now, the latest thing, we're, we're working on the next generation of sample preparation for CSI type of things. It's not for the movies, but, uh, for investigating, um, um, on a cellular or a biological level, you know, how things are, are, uh, are, are, are being, uh, analyzed. For example, um, we did a little project that, uh, could help us determine why, um, we have hardening of the arteries, but we don't have hardening of the veins. It's the same blood and the same blood vessel. Why is it, why does it do that? And, uh, I felt good about that one. We are also working on one right now, just finishing up a device that sterilizes the connections, uh, between, uh, containers that, that, that make pharmaceutical drugs. In the past, um, a lot of money has been spent on, on trying to make that. We, we, we're working with a company, actually in North Carolina, that has come up with something very novel, latest and greatest on the FDA approval list. And, uh, we're glad to be a part of that. That's, that's really going to make us, uh, successful here in, in Buncombe County. So, that's a little bit about, uh, so.
Okay, is there any other questions for Mr. Maska before we start our public hearing? And Mr. Creighton, what is the amount, the incentive being added?
It is, it's $25,000, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions before we start a public hearing?
How many employees do you have now? Said you started with two.
Yeah, we have 40.
Say, one of the cool things about being a commissioner is when you come and you have somebody that you hear about their company, where they started with a couple of people. And to hear what you do is just, I mean, it, it just blows me away. Just amazing, you know, the things that you're doing for, uh, for the, for the country and, and, and everywhere. It's amazing. It's amazing, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Maska. Start our public hearing at 5:54. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on the proposed $25,000 incentive, uh, package for PolyLink? If none, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 5:55. Is there any further discussion among the commissioners? Any other questions for Mr. Creighton? If not, is there a motion to adopt the economic incentive package?
I make the motion.
Second. Commissioner, by, uh, there's been a motion by Commissioner Frye, a second by Commissioner Newman. Is there any further discussion? All those, all those in favor of approving the $25,000 incentive package as proposed, uh, by Commissioner Frye and Commissioner Newman, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then that incentive is adopted by seven to zero vote. Thank you, Mr. Maska. Uh, and Mr. Creighton. Next week, the next public hearing we have is the rezoning Viv and Young, 46 properties from the Weaverville ETJ. We have, uh, our zoning director, Josh O'Connor, to tell us a little bit about this rezoning request. Josh?
Okay, I'll wait just a second for the maps to pull up for these, these properties. Um, these are a result of the transition of the extraterritorial jurisdiction area from the town of Weaverville to Buncombe County. Um, as you'll remember, the commissioners allowed a, a period where fees for rezoning were waived. And this is one of, uh, the requests that we received. Um, the requested zoning is for a single-family residential district or the R1 district. Uh, the current zoning is residential district R3, which allows for, uh, single-family residential and a variety of, of multifamily uses. Um, the staff recommendation is for approval with some caveats, which I'll review in a second. Um, and the planning board recommendation was to approve 41 of the parcels, uh, while denying five of the, the parcels. If you give me just a second to flip here, see if I can point. Um, the, the parcels which the, the planning board, um, voted to deny, um, are these parcels right here, uh, on the north end of the, the, the map. And I don't think you can really see where I'm pointing. Um, and there were some, also some parcels, um, to the eastern end. And I believe in your package, you have a, a map that outlines those parcels in red. So, you should be able to see those. The rezoning analysis is, uh, there was an original request for 47 parcels. Um, after discussion of the planning board, one of those parcels was removed. Um, the, the properties currently contain a mix of single-family homes and undeveloped property. And that the, the department notes that the applicants only own one of the PIN numbers included in this map and the, the amendment request. And the department has not been able to verify, um, that the applicants have contacted all the property owners in question. Although I will say all the property owners at this point, um, should have received two notices from our department. Uh, we've made a newspaper advertisement on two occasions and we have posted the properties, uh, in the vicinity twice with information on how to contact our department for more information and the time and date for these hearings. Um, the department has received requests, um, that certain PIN numbers being removed from the proposal and those are those properties that are outlined in red, um, that the planning board recommended to deny. That was at the behest of the, the owners of those properties. Uh, we believe the proposed map amendment would be consistent with the Buncombe County land use plan as the land use constraint maps within the comprehensive, uh, land use plan 2030. two thousand thirteen update show that, that the, the property is not within reasonable proximity to a transportation corridor. Uh, it's not completely outside of flood hazard areas. Um, there are some areas that are over twenty-five percent slope. Um, there are some distance between the properties and public utilities, uh, in a few cases. Um, and it does contain certain areas of land which are considered to be high and moderate landslide hazards per the, uh, the suitability maps. Therefore, the subject properties may not be, are, are suitable for the R-one zoning district as indicated on the suitability matrix. Um, we did indicate that there's public water available in the area, which will make it for some, appropriate for some tracks remain R-three. Um, given the fact that detailed information is not available on each parcel, and several property owners, uh, did not provide consent to the application submitted, uh, we kind of hedged the recommendation against the fact that, uh, the acknowledgement and consent of individual landowners to account for the fact that on the ground, um, assessments of individual parcels could contradict, uh, the findings within this recommendation, meaning that individual property owners may have more information about their property, um, at a finer scale than we can see, uh, in the maps that we have available. Um, we don't believe that R-one zoning would be detrimental to the owner's adjacent neighbors and surrounding, uh, community as it is consistent with surrounding properties and supported by the, the Buncombe County land use plan. Um, and therefore, with all of the, uh, the caveats that I've expressed, we recommend approval. So, with that, I can entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, so, the top corner, the highest on that map, those three parcels are right next to a road, correct?
That's, that's correct.
And that was, that's three of the five that the planning board said they, that we should deny.
Yes.
And then the other one is the, um, kind of halfway down, there are two lots there, and that gentleman did not want to be moved from R-three to R-one, is that right?
That's correct, uh, that's the Abernathy property, and, and he sent correspondence to our department asking to be removed from the rezoning. By law, uh, we feel that we have to advance the, the request, but he did not consent to the, to the application.
Okay. Could you restate that, Josh, by law, you, just restate what you just said?
By law, once an application is made, we have to move the, the request forward. Um, there's no legal requirement that an individual be the owner of a piece of property in order to include it in a rezoning request. Um, it's just like any amendment to the, the zoning ordinance, we have to allow any citizen the opportunity to make amendments. So, the, the owner doesn't have to consent. Um, it is something that we usually bring up if we're aware that the owner does not consent to a piece of property being rezoned.
So, part of what you're recommending for denial is a result of that, that property owner not wishing to have their property changed?
That's correct, and that was the discussion that took place at the planning board as well.
Thanks.
All right, so the planning board said all but five, and the staff said, now you're saying three, two of the five.
I, I think, I think we can make a case, um, for the, the northern three to be, uh, left out most easily. Uh, the Abernathy properties do fit within the, the context of, of their surrounding neighborhood, uh, in terms of access and, and where they fit, so, um, there's, there's more of a case for them to be included in the rezoning.
But, but the actual official recommendation is off, all, all be approved?
That's, yeah, yes, that's correct.
All right. Any other questions before we do our public hearing on this rezoning request?
How, how close is the Abernathy property to the other properties?
I mean, they're, they're all bunched together.
Okay.
Because it is adjacent to an existing area of, of R-three zoning, um, the exclusion of, of neither group of par- property would create a, a spot zoning, so that's not a concern.
Right.
Um, you could go either way and still be safe, um, from creating spot zoning.
Thank you.
All righty, any other pre-public hearing questions? Okay, if none, Josh, thank you. We'll open the public hearing on the rezoning of the Bibb and Young, forty-six properties from the Weaverville ETJ. Begin the public hearing at six oh three PM. Any members of the public wish to be heard on this rezoning? Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, board members, thanks for, uh, listening to us on this. The name is Yount, Y-O-U-N-T, and Bips, B-I-P-S. Uh, I want to clear that up first. And we didn't-
What is your name, sir?
Ken Yount.
You're, you're Mr. Yount, okay, thank you.
We didn't just arbitrarily decide to rezone other people's properties. We came together as a neighborhood, and we all decided where, we gave everybody the opportunity to meet with us, and the majority of the people in this community decided that this is the way that we wanted to go in order to preserve our community. We're very rural in nature, um, most of the properties that are there are larger properties, they're larger tracks, and this is just to preserve basically what we currently have there. In speaking to the Abernathy track, he owns two tracks. One of them, he has a home that he has on the market for just under a million dollars. So, I think that easily fits within the R-one classification. The other parcel that he owns sits directly in front of it and directly in front of his view of the valley. So, I don't anticipate that anything's going to happen there that would be, uh, different than what you would have in an R-one zoning. So, again, we've had at least a half a dozen community meetings where we've discussed this, uh, discussed what's going on in the Reams Creek Valley area, and this, this is what we felt we wanted to do, to have some input into, you know, what our community looks like today and what it's going to look like, you know, five years from now, ten years from now.
Thank you, Mr. Yount. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this rezoning request? If none, I'll declare the public hearing closed at six oh seven. Any discussion among the board?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Belcher.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, request as the planning board recommendation, approval forty-one parcels, denial of five.
All right, there's been a motion to approve the, uh, planning board request which would deny the five parcels identified by Mr. O'Connor. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion of the motion?
And, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could point out procedurally, if, uh, for this vote, staff had no idea how to draft anything in favor or in denial of, of this request for rezoning. So, what we would need to do, I would just ask Commissioner Belcher if his motion is to approve as planning board recommended. You first have to make, this board should first make a resolution that it is consistent with the land use plan and reasonable in the public interest, and then, secondly, vote on the ordinance change from R-three to R-one separately.
As he said.
So moved, okay.
Mr. Fruit, do we need to have three votes then? One for the approval, and then one for the, the denial to make sure that we're covered on the disposition of all the properties?
I think that would be a good idea. Uh, first would be whether or not the forty-one parcels, as you're, you're proposing to approve, that the rezoning is reasonable in the public interest and consistent with the land use plan for the reasons stated by the zoning administrator for the forty-one parcels. Then separately, vote for forty-ones, yes, and five, no.
Okay, so, I'm going to change my motion to, uh, to approve forty-one parcels because it's, um, reasonable in accordance with our, as you said.
Okay, that, that's in good form, okay. So, there's been a motion to, to find that this is consistent with our land use plan and to adopt the forty-one parcels that both planning board and planning staff agree on.
Yes.
And the, and there was a second, I think, by Commissioner Fryer, is that right? Okay. All right, there's been a motion and second. We're going to vote, have two votes, actually, yeah, two votes, one on the, uh, this, this motion with the forty-one parcels, then we'll have a second vote on the five remaining parcels that the planning, uh, board recommended denial on.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion of these forty-one parcels that both planning staff and planning board, uh, agreed upon in the motion by Commissioner Belcher and seconded by Commissioner Fryer? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of finding the, the, uh, the, uh, rezoning is consistent with land use plan and adopting the forty-one acres, uh, forty-one parcels that were indicated in this proposal? All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
Okay, then, uh, the motion to do the forty-one acres is adopted by six to one vote, Commissioner Jones against. Now, I will entertain a motion to how to deal with the remaining five acres, or five parcels.
Make a motion to deny, accordance with the planning board recommendation, the five parcels as listed here.
Okay, there's been a motion to, uh, to, uh, deny the recommended for the five parcels that were identified earlier by, uh, Mr. O'Connor. Is there a second to that motion? I think there's been, there's been a motion to deny the rezoning request for the five parcels in the front, the front west, map's not there, but the front edge and the other, the five parcels that the planning board, uh, recommended we reject.
I'll second it.
All right, there's been a motion and a second on the five parcels, um, to deny their, um, moving from R-three to R-one. Is there any discussion of that motion?
I just want to be, um, clear, from where I'm coming from, I completely, uh, respect the, all the explanations, but, um, my, uh, vote to against in the prior one and against in this one will be because I really felt like the, the stronger case was to, um, approve the entire proposal in its whole, and I was not comfortable with how the planning board did that. Even though I agree, I understand it's totally legit, I was, um, I'm supportive of the whole, of the whole proposal that came forward, so, I'll be, I will not be supporting the denial, whatever.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
And along those lines, um, I think I'm, the, the part I'm less inclined to deny is the, the two parcels that are sort of further to the south and in the interior, which would then sort of be surrounded by all of the other properties that we've just rezoned, and there's a, you know, there's a ridge behind it. So, it seems like, I mean, I, I believe you that it doesn't meet the, if you say it doesn't meet the technical standard for spot zoning, I believe you because I've never understood exactly how that works. I always, uh, lean on the professionals for that kind of determination, but it does seem, it does seem inconsistent with what we've done in all of the adjoining properties going up in the, the neighborhood there. Uh, I'm okay with, um, I, I'm more comfortable keeping the zoning the way it is on the three parcels on the north side, but I'm going to vote against the motion because I think we should keep the, uh, the other two properties that are virtually surrounded by other properties that have been rezoned consistent with the, the neighbors.
Any other comments on the motion to deny the five parcels in question? Call the question. All those in favor of, uh, Commissioner Belcher's motion to deny the R-one to R, no, R-three to R-one designation for the five parcels? And this will be, this vote would be to deny the, uh, the, uh, the overall scheme that was proposed here?
And can I just, before we vote on it, um, Chairman, just, I just want to ask the staff. So, if, and I don't, I don't presume to know where everyone else is, uh, would, you know, would be on, on those issues, but is, is what I just described a scenario that we could do tonight if we felt like the, uh, we wanted to disapprove the properties on the north, but include on the properties that are in the central part and keep those consistent with all the others around it? Is that an option that we could? There's no legal reason we couldn't go down that path, is there?
No, should this motion fail to go forward? I mean, that's one of the, the options available to you.
Okay.
Okay, but, uh, just a point of clarification, since, um, Commissioner brought that up, is these, these two that your, that Commissioner Newman's talking about are the two that the, the property owner said, "I do not want to be included."
That's correct, it's-
And that property, though, what, um, what you, you said is absolutely true, that it is kind of in the middle of that, does back up to, um, you know, a, many, many lots that are alre- already R-three, so they would just kind of blend into that.
Yeah, all the properties to the, uh, to the eastern boundaries of, of those two properties are, are three. So, either way you go.
I, I understand, I, and I get, I, I think that's a good point. Um, but just with the, kind of the topography, it is kind of naturally separated. I mean, there's kind of a natural separation there just based on the lay of the land. You know, that's, so I, I agree, it's, it is technically con- technically contiguous, but it's sort of much more part of, you know, the other, the other properties, um, to the north and west and south.
Okay, well, let me, uh, let me suggest procedurally, um, I'm, I'm open, uh, this will be Commissioner Belcher's call, to vote on the parcels, uh, in group, the three at the top and the two at the bottom, if that's the, I'd, I'd offer that as a friendly amendment if you want to do that. If not, we can just vote on the five denials now, and then if, if it passes, we're done. If not, we will continue to discuss options on those five.
Question for Mr. O'Connor, Mr.-
Is that, wait, I guess, is that, I'll have to add as a friendly amendment. I, I would say, let's just vote on the three at the top and then the two at the bottom, if that-
As, as much discussion as I called earlier about a friendly amendment, I'm certainly okay with that, so, I mean, if that's what y'all want to try to do, if you want to break the two apart, I mean, they are, they are different. All I'm trying to do was, was to get, I was recommending the planning board rec- recommendation. That was where I was getting to. So, with the ni- denial, I understand that i- i- if, if you want to do three and two, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, but-
The chair's made a, the chair's made a friendly amendment that has been accepted. Mr. Fry also has to-
No.
No, okay.
All right, well, let's vote on-
We're going to vote up and down on the five denials.
That's fine.
Okay, so this vote will be whether we, to adopt the motion to deny the, um, the additional, uh, from R-three to R-five of the five, all five parcels.
All five parcels is based on the planning, the planning-
Based on the planning, planning board-
Recommendation.
Recommendation, yes, sir.
Okay, so it's a first and a second on denying the five based on the planning board's recommendation, which includes, three of those includes, for point of discussion, the, the ones that you're recommending, but two of those is based on a property owner's request.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, does everybody understand what we're, we're going to vote on? Okay, so-
We're, we're doing all five right now.
We're doing all five.
This vote is to deny all five.
Okay, I have a question for-
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Commissioner King.
What was the reasoning behind the recommendation from planning board to deny these?
Um, the, the receipt of, uh, correspondence from the owners.
Okay.
I mean, all five, there were, there was correspondence from the owners asking to be removed.
Did the owners go to the planning board meetings?
No, there were no owners, um, in attendance in opposition to my-
But then, but, but then what was the recommend, what was the reasoning behind recommending the change for the others then? Is this a, is this a neighborhood?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Um, I think that-
So, so by denying those five, we're, we're not keeping the neighborhood consistent, is that?
Um, I think the issue of discussion is the, the two parcels, um, that are, are about midway down on the eastern side, um, as we had the planning board discussion fit within the neighborhood, there is an argument against the, the northern three parcels, the whirly parcels, um, whether or not they're, they're part of the, the ne- the contiguous neighborhood, um, so they're-
They're not part of the neighborhood.
I think that's up for debate, and that was the discussion at the planning board.
So, we're kind of lost in the process here.
This is a, this is a motion to deny all five parcels at this point. So, we're going to vote on to deny all five parcels, uh, because the friendly amendment was not adopted by both movements. So, the motion is to deny the, uh, change from R-three to R-one of all five parcels. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
I counted, uh, Belcher and Fry in favor, remainder against, am I correct? Okay.
Chairman, again, I have a motion.
Yes, Commissioner Jones.
So, I, I really, um, am supportive of the planning staff's recommendation to, um, rezone all forty-six, and my concern is that, uh, it, it appears to me that, you know, a letter saying that, that they don't want to participate is all you got to do. And, and that just kind of flies in my face in terms of trying to understand what's, you know, appropriate and in a professional looking at a whole tract. So, I, you know, I understand there's different interpretations, but that's where I'm coming from. So, I, um, am convinced that it, the whole package made sense and was, uh, consistent, so-
So, that's, my motion is to approve the planning staff's recommendation for the R one zoning for the forty-six parcels.
Okay, and since we've already approved the forty-one, this would be the additional five. So, there's been a motion to approve all forty-six, including the forty-one we have earlier voted on. Is there, is there a second to that motion? There's a second by Vice Chair Frost. Is there any further discussion? This will technically be a vote on the five parcels, although it's worded "all forty-six" because that was the original.
I would say respectfully that I, that I do disagree that if a letter comes in that says that I don't want my property to be rezoned, that that is sufficient for consideration, there may be additional conversations that may occur from that, and that is my entire position on this regarding a couple of the lots, and, and that is what the property owners want. And so, I'll be...
It goes back to... It goes back to, I live in a neighborhood that I bought into because they had restrictions, they had a covenants, you know. This is not a covenants, these are people that bought property, own property, and up till now, they've had their property the way they want it. If they wanted a homeowners association, they should have done that upfront, and that way they would have their own rules, they wouldn't have to be messing with us, and then the fact is. But I don't think it's my job to tell people what they need to do with their property, because we, we get into different facts that we can only have trailers in certain spots in Buncombe County, but nobody wants them next door to them. But we have a person that don't want to put his property that he bought and paid for into something, and we got people going to tell him, that's what you're going to do whether you like it or not.
Well, I just want to, I'm going to say this last thing, I'm going to hush, is I want to make sure the younts understand that the forty-one that was applied for, I'm okay with that, it's not a problem. You know, full disclosure, discussion has been had with all those people, and I'm, you know, really against the, the, the five, so, okay?
Alrighty, there has been a motion by Commissioner Jones and a second by Vice Chair Frost to approve the remaining five parcels from R, or to change our, the remaining five parcels from R three to R one, which would basically be the whole forty-six parcel.
Separate thing then.
We've already voted for forty-one, so technically we're just voting on the last one.
That's right, we're only voting on the five.
Is there any other discussion or any other questions about the motion?
So, I would just add one thing, is that in terms of the zoning that is being proposed for the, for these, all the properties, but particularly the five that are, you know, in question, that is consistent use for what is there now, correct? So, we're not necessarily directing somebody to do anything differently in the future. It is, it is a zoning classification that is consistent with the use that those property owners are currently experiencing as well as the, the neighbors.
I do believe on the, the northern three tracks, the whirly property there is a manufactured home on one of those, those properties, which R, R one would not accommodate. Under the non-conforming use clauses within the zoning ordinance, they could replace that, but they could not add any new manufactured homes to the property should this pass.
Gotcha.
And it would be grandfathered, the, the one in there would be grandfathered in by law.
They could replace it within a hundred and eighty days of the removal of the existing manufactured home.
But if they didn't do anything, it would be grandfathered in for all time.
That's correct.
Perpetually. Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments about the motion?
I'm still trying to understand, is, is this a neighborhood, I mean, or is this just property along the road? I, I, you know, it's a rural...
If I can, if I can approach for a second.
Sure. Can you get it on there, just so you'll direct her, which, which number? I'm looking. Is it map two, is that right?
The aerial map, map two.
Aerial map two, please, ma'am.
So, these northern three parcels are here to be addressed.
Josh, I'm not comfortable, would you, would you go back? I, I think, if you could point out, I think everyone has a right to hear this.
I don't think you can see it, once I put it on the television, it, it blurs it out. There were some questions of access on those northern three parcels.
That's the very top of the, of the map.
Of the map.
The very top three parcels, is that right?
That's correct, and if we can flip to map four, I believe those are highlighted. So, you can, you can see those are the parcels outlined in red on the north section of the map. There, there's some debate about whether those are included in the, the formal neighborhood. This is in a neighborhood that's restricted by restrictive covenants, so there, there are some issues about the, the neighbor, neighborhood boundaries there. The parcels on the eastern boundary about midway down do fit a little bit better within the, the systems of access and the surrounding homes, and they do appear to be congruent with the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, and this is just cleaning up some of that EJT stuff that we...
This was a request from the, from the neighborhood following the transition.
Alright, any other questions?
Call a question.
Call the question. The question is, do we change the remaining five parcels, including the top three and the bottom, and the middle two, or bottom two, from R three to R one?
Okay. And we would also, if, if it's the pleasure of the board to approve this motion, we need that same clarification that this is consistent with the...
Consistent with the land use plan. So, that's, I'll take that as a joint motion, is that agreeable to both movements? Okay, so, the motion is consistent with land use plan and to grant the application given to us for the five parcels from R three to R one. Questions being called, I'm, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries five to two, I heard Belcher and Fry against, is that correct? Okay, thank you. So, all forty-six parcels have been approved from R three to R one. The next rezoning hearing, public hearing we have is the Rubino property at the Weaverville ETJ. Josh?
Sure, hopefully this one's a little bit less complex than the, the last one. This is actually proceeding a, a larger rezoning request that the board will be seeing within the, the next month or so. It is a downzoning from R two to R one requested by the property owner. My understanding is the property owner desires to just add a layer of protection to the, the property on which they now live. The, the subject property is located at the intersection of Hamburg Mountain Road and Shuford Road. It currently contains a single-family home, it's on a three-point-five acre tract. And the property to the north across from Hamburg Mountain Road is already zoned R one, so that prevents this being classified as a spot zoning. The proposed map amendment is consistent with the Buncombe County land use plan and land use constraint maps within the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan 2013 update, because it's not located within reasonable proximity to a transportation corridor. A small portion of the property is greater than twenty-five percent slope. The property is located outside of high elevations. The property is not located within reasonable proximity to infrastructure. It doesn't contain moderate to high stability hazards. It's located outside of flood hazards, and it's adjacent to existing low resident, low-density residential uses. We don't believe it would be detrimental to owners or neighbors or the surrounding community, and therefore, we recommend approval. Planning board also recommended approval of this, this parcel.
Are there any questions for Mr. O'Connor before we start a public hearing in this rezoning request? If none, I'll declare the public hearing initiated at six twenty-three. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on the Rubino rezoning request in the Weaverville ETJ? No takers, we'll declare the public hearing closed at six twenty-eight. Is there any discussion among the board of this rezoning request?
Thank you, motion to approve.
Second.
Then a motion by Commissioner Newman, a second by Commissioner Belcher, is there any further discussion?
And if I might.
I think it's consistent with our plans, and so, that's...
Yes, sir.
And this is, you did attach the ordinance that includes all this, so we just...
There is a recommended statement of consistency and separately recommended ordinance for the board.
Okay, so that, it is included, so good, thank you, thanks, good catch. Okay, any discussion of this rezoning request? If none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion by Commissioner Newman, second by Commissioner Belcher, to adopt the ordinance consistency and change as requested, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then that rezoning request is adopted by a seven to zero vote. The next public hearing we have tonight are joint hearings on two proposed grant applications to be submitted to NC DOT for mountain mobility involving Community Transportation Program Grant and also the Appalachian Development Transportation Assistance Grant, a program grant. And we have Denise Brain, Luba, I'm not even close, I should get this by now. Luba, okay, thank you. And Landis Sky Transportation Manager Lori Embry with Mount Embry will talk to us. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We appreciate this opportunity to come for you today to talk to you about a couple of grants for FY 2016. The, today's public hearing and grant applications relate to our annual applications to the NC DOT for our administrative and capital funding for mountain mobility's transportation needs. And the other grant is an Appalachian Development Transportation Assistance Program Grant. Buncombe County is fortunate to be one of twenty-nine counties in North Carolina to be eligible for this grant for 2016. It may be only a one-year grant, but we're, we're glad to have the opportunity to apply for these funds. Luba, as Commissioner or Chairman Gant mentioned, is here, she'll be discussing the administrative and capital grant request. And then Lori Embry with McDonald Transit, our operations contractor and general manager at Mountain Mobility, will be discussing the Appalachian Development Transportation Assistance Program Grant. I promise this will be brief, and then you can carry on with your public hearing, but we'll be available should the board have any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, good evening. I'm going to say a couple of words about the fifty-three eleven Community Transportation Grant, and this is a grant that we apply for every year. It has two parts, it has the administrative part and the capital grant part. Under the administrative grant, we are asking for three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars with a fifteen percent local match required. The administrative grant is going to be covering technology and communication costs as well as other administrative costs that are eligible, and that will help us continue the operations of Mount Mobility. And I did want to note that there is a reduction to the fifty-three eleven Community Transportation Grant this year because the state has notified us that as Buncombe County is becoming more urban, the state is actually decreasing the subsidy from the state to the administrative funding. So, there's actually a reduction of about sixty-six thousand dollars to the fifty-three eleven administrative grant portion this year. And Mount Mobility staff have been in communications with MPO staff and also NC DOT to try and figure out how we can look at the urban funds distribution formerly in our region. Currently, only the city of Asheville and Henderson County divide the urban transit funding, and in the future, we'll be looking at that formula to see how Buncombe County could receive a portion of that funding for transit. On the capital grant side, it's a little bit simpler. We're requesting four-hundred-and-eighty thousand under this grant. About ten percent of that's going to be from local match, and that's going to go to cover seven vehicle replacements and also seven radios. So, those are replacement vehicles, it's not an expansion grant project. Thank you, and next Lori's going to talk to you about the Appalachian Development Transportation Grant.
Alright, before you get started, any questions about this program first, before we, before we hear about the other program and do our public hearing on both? Okay, go ahead, thank you, sorry, go ahead, Lori.
Good evening, as, as has already been mentioned, this is the Appalachian Development Program that we're eligible for, and there's no indications that it'll be an ongoing source of funding. So, we looked at opportunities to access some of these funds and see if we could address, try to help address some of the financial constraints that have also already been mentioned. So, our application is going to have two components to it. The first one would be a planning project where we would apply for funds to pay for an outside consultant to come in and take a look at all of our mountain mobility data, our ridership data, our, our current service delivery model, which is primarily a door-to-door with three trailblazer services that we provide, taking a look at all of those and doing an in-depth holistic analysis, just really taking a look at it top to bottom. We evaluate our service regularly throughout every year, and we have made service changes based on funding constraints, but this would be an opportunity to really take a look at it holistically, take a look at opportunities for coordination, connectivity, and changing our service, our service model design, how we provide transportation services, to see if there is a more efficient service delivery model that we need to transition towards maintaining our high level of service that we offer to residents of Buncombe County, but at the same time, increasing efficiency so that we're able to provide that same level of service for a lower per-unit cost, perhaps increased ridership, but at the same, creating a sustainable model under the funding constraints that we're currently facing. So, that would be the planning component of the project. The other component of the project is technology-oriented. Mountain Mobility currently has route match scheduling software and dispatching software, and we also have onboard data terminals on all of our vehicles. So, we have a live data communication going on between the vehicles and the dispatchers at all times. We have automated scheduling, we do over six-hundred trips a day. We definitely wouldn't be able to provide those without, without the automated scheduling. This would be another module with the route match software, it's a notification model, module. So, it would give us the opportunity to, once the schedules are created for the following business day, there would be a night before automated phone call to every passenger confirming their trip, giving them an estimated arrival time for their van. And then, it would also give them the opportunity to cancel that trip through an, an interactive voice recognition, IVR software is what it is. So, there would be the opportunity to reduce cancels or no-shows where the van actually shows up to provide the trip, and the person isn't going, but they maybe forgot to call, or had some kind of last-minute thing, and they weren't able to get a message to us the night before. So, it would be a, a night, we'd have the technology to do the night before telephone calls confirming appointment times. We would also have flexibility throughout the day to, if there's a delay, if there's a van that's stuck in an accident, traffic on, on an interstate or something along those lines, that we could send out a automatic phone call for notification of all the passengers on that vehicle, letting them know of the delay, making sure they still want to do the trip, and letting them know of an adjusted arrival time. Another benefit is inclement weather, for example, would have been handy this morning. But it, things like that, we, for example, we had an agency that went on a two-hour delayed opening this morning, so we went to, we took all of those passengers and scheduled, rescheduled their trips to get them there when the agency was going to be open. In this situation, the technology would allow an automated call to them, letting them know what their new pickup time is going to be, and also confirming, do they still want to go on the trip? So, there's a lot of opportunities for passengers to communicate with us and get those trips canceled so that we can fill empty seats in the dispatch office, so that we can, we don't waste any extra miles that we don't need to. So, that's the second component. Both of those are geared towards increasing efficiency in mountain mobility system. And the, the project budget, the planning project, we've proposed forty-five thousand dollars for. The interactive voice recognition module would be seventy-two thousand, three hundred dollars, so that's a total project cost of a hundred-and-seventeen thousand, three hundred. Eighty percent of that would be the Appalachian Development Funds, federal funds, so that's eighty percent is ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and forty, and the local, local match funds would be twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty.
Alrighty, so Lori, just to get this straight, basically for the community transportation, you're asking for a hundred thousand, and we get eight-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand if we get the grant, is that correct?
For the, yeah, the fifty-three...
Local match is a hundred and...
A little over a hundred, actually, yeah, it's right around a hundred thousand that's being asked for in local match, and then the balance comes from NC DOT funding and also from federal funding for community transportation.
So, for a hundred thousand dollar investment, we get eight-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand in... So for a $100,000 investment, we get $831,000 in return
That's correct.
From other sources. And then in your program, Lori, it's $23,000 investment for $117,000 return. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And I'll just say about our administrative grant, the match funds for our administrative grant are always within our existing budget requests, so we're not going to be asking for additional county dollars there. Our county, our capital request, whether it be for the vehicle replacements or for the Appalachian Grant, if we can possibly stretch dollars to meet those match requirements, we will. We have, however, submitted the capital request within the county's normal budget process for capital request, and so that'll be coming before you during the budget process for 2016. But again, we will not be requesting additional administrative dollars to match those funds. These will mainly be capital match funds, if any, are needed.
All righty. Any questions before we do our public hearing on this joint, or proposed, two proposed grant applications for NC DOT? Okay, thank you. Any members, okay, I'll declare the public hearing open at 6:40. Are there any members of the public that would like to be heard on the joint public hearing on the two proposed grant applications to be submitted to NC DOT on behalf of Mountain Mobility, Buncombe County Community Transportation Program? Yes, sir, Mr. Rice? Any other members of the public wish to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I always like these folks. They help the disabled people. They help the sick. It's about what we should be doing for everyone. But I think they heard us on asking for the overall look at Mountain Mobility. And I certainly have asked this question many, many times. And going out and getting this second look of someone to evaluate the whole system, I think is a great idea, and I think it's going to improve what we do for the people as well. If you can improve and save money, you're going to add more people to service. And I think this is a great opportunity, and I just want to say thank them, you know, for what they're doing here for that. So if you get a kudo from me, you better take it home and bless it.
Lord have mercy. There is a God in heaven. All right. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on these grant, proposed grant applications? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 6:42. Any discussion among the board?
Do I make a motion to approve?
Okay. There's been a motion by Commissioner Veltzer to approve the joint, the proposed grant applications to be submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Veltzer, a second by Commissioner King. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of adopting the, going forward with the proposed grant applications, including the matches discussed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries seven to zero. County manager report.
Chairman, just one procedural question before we move on to that. Did we need to do, did we need to do two, or can we do one?
That's a good question.
Well, there were two, there were, there's two resolutions, right?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I think it should be two.
So can we say that was for the first one, the section 5311?
Do we need to have two public hearings?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion on the second item, the Appalachian Development Transportation Assistance Program Grant Resolution.
Okay, well, let me ask this, just, okay, that's fine.
So mine would, mine and David's would have been?
You'd have to agree, okay.
I'm okay.
Why don't we just revote? Let's just do it. Let's just do it.
Okay, so I'm going to make-
There was a motion by Commissioner Veltzer, a second by Commissioner King to approve the Community Transportation Grant.
Right.
Okay, and we're going to do them one at a time. Any questions about that, any further discussion? All those in favor of the Community Transportation Grant application say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then the Community Transportation Program Grant has been adopted by a seven to zero vote. Is there a motion on the Appalachian Development Transportation?
Submitted.
And a motion by Commissioner Newman, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Frost. Is there any discussion of the Appalachian proposed application? All those in favor of that application say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then that, that application is likewise adopted by a seven to zero vote. Okay, no county manager report? Thank you, Commissioner, good catch, Commissioner Newman on that.
No problem.
And thank you, Mr. Attorney. Next, we have, we've done the capital request, we did that on board. Next, we have Debbie Trumpy talking to us about conservation easement request.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have a request for funding for transaction costs for conservation easements. This is open space and farmland. And if we can start our, let's see. Nope, is it upside down? The agricultural, the farm, land conservation advisory board and agricultural advisory board have each recommended two easements for funding. The four easements would permanently protect 287 acres. The land conservation advisory board has recommended the OM Sanctuary and Early View easements, and those easements would be held by the Southern Appalachian Highlands Conservancy. The agricultural advisory board has recommended the Nesbit and Morris easements, and those easements would be held and monitored by the Soil and Water Conservation District. The OM Sanctuary tract is located at Richmond Hill in Woodfin, and the request is for $27,500 for transaction costs. That $27,500 would leverage $376,000 in donated value and $20,000 in donated stewardship funds, as well as a $400,000 private contribution. This property is a conservation priority area as the areas adjacent to the French Broad and Swananoa Rivers are priority conservation areas. On the map here, the tract in question is shown in red. It's located on the west bank of the French Broad River, and it is in Woodfin Town Limits. It's a forested tract, and it starts at the banks of the French Broad and Flood Plain and rises to a bluff on Richmond Hill. The property is highly visible from the French Broad River, I-26, and UNCA. The tract is just south of the state-designated Richmond Hill Forest Natural Area, which is the yellow-hatched area on the map.
Is that what's shown in the pictures that shows the walking trails?
The pictures are actually the-
Or is that the property?
The property itself.
Okay, thanks.
And this tract is about 550 feet from the Richmond Hill Forest Natural Area. That area has been inventoried, and it contains wetlands, vernal pools, rock bluffs, and rare species. The OM Sanctuary property contains habitat very similar to the Richmond Hill Forest Natural Area, and it has sensitive ecological as well as scenic values. Here is a picture of the property as you're looking across from the east bank of the French Broad River. The Early's View Farm is the second easement recommended by LCAB, and it is located in Sandy Mush. The landowners are willing to donate 100% of the easement value, as well as make a contribution to SAHC's stewardship fund. Land Conservation Advisory Board is requesting $30,900 for transaction costs, which will leverage $360,000 in donated value, as well as $20,000 in donated stewardship funds. This property is a conservation focus area as it's a high-elevation tract located on a ridge near other conserved tracts. On the map here, it's the property shown in red. It's located near Early's Cove in Sandy Mush, and it's on the Buncombe-Madison County line. The property is highly visible from Sandy Mush Creek Road and Early's Mountain Road and is in close proximity to other protected tracts. The yellow areas on the map are other properties protected by conservation easements, and the blue and green areas are owned by SAHC and FESimple or our life estates. The property is largely forested and rises in elevation up to 2,870 feet, and it contains a mile and three-quarter miles of headwater tributaries of Sandy Mush Creek, which is a designated trout stream. The property contains prime soils and state and locally important soils, and this easement would help preserve the agricultural heritage and scenic qualities of Sandy Mush. Third easement request is for the Nesbit Farm in Fairview. The agricultural advisory board is requesting $35,000 for transaction costs. That $35,000 would leverage $200,000 in donated value and a projected $550,000 in federal and state grants. Those grants are being applied for now. They have not yet been received. And the property's a conservation priority area as it is a working farm. On the map, you can see the Nesbit properties. They're not all adjacent. They're in blue hatched areas. Two are in the northern area and one further down. All three of them border Kane Creek in Fairview. The farm has several hundred yards of frontage on Kane Creek and has very rich soils with over 85% of the property containing prime or locally important soils. Here's a view of the farm looking from Kane Creek towards the dairy. This farm has been in the Nesbit family for 110 years, and three of the Nesbits' children are currently involved in the farming operation. The family is dedicated and has a history of sustainable production, with the John K. Nesbit family being selected as the outstanding conservation farm family for North Carolina in 1978. So they have a long history of farming there. Currently, the farm produces organic vegetables, and they have a 500-member CSA, and they operate a 300 cow dairy. Second easement recommended by the Ag Advisory Board is the Morris Farm in Black Mountain. The landowners are willing to donate 100% of the easement value. The Ag Advisory Board is requesting $25,000 for transaction costs, which would leverage $158,000 in donated value. This is a working farm and therefore a conservation priority area for the county. On the map here, the property is located on North Fork Reich Fork in Black Mountain, and it's the hatch area on the map that the orange arrow is pointing to. It's located within a half-mile a town of Black Mountain, and it's just a half-mile south of the Asheville watershed, and is in close proximity to other protected properties. All of the blue-shaded area on the map is land that is currently under conservation easements. You've got the North Fork and Beetree Reservoirs and Montrite Property. The Morris family once owned 300 acres of forest and farmland in the Black Mountain Valley. The Morris brothers are fourth generation and are committed to preventing further subdivision of their property and preserving it as farmland. And as an interesting note, the original North Fork Wagon Road is on the property, and they still maintain it as a farm road. And another view of the farm, it contains various streams and springs, and the Morris has raised cattle and hay, as well as actively managed the forest land. So in summary, the request for the four easements is $118,400, which would be used for transaction costs only. The easements will be either 100% donations or bargain sales using grants and private funds. The county contribution would leverage over $2 million in grants, private donations, and landowner donated value, which is almost $18 for each county dollar. I'd be happy to take questions now.
Any questions for Ms. Trumpy?
I would like to make a motion that we approve this, and I'm grateful to this amazing, amazing program, and thank you to everyone for putting it together and leaving this.
It's been a motion by Vice Chair Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just got, I plan on voting for this, but I do have something, and I asked the question, it's like right before the meeting, so I apologize if the information didn't get to the other commissioners. I just wanted to share it with you now. Asked Ms. Trumpy about the OM property, which was near the river, because it was a little, it looked a little bit different than what we had seen before. Most of what we'd seen was farmland and, you know, near the Parkway Air Views or whatever. And so I asked about what it was zoned for because I knew that we had approved, we have zoned on the river commercial, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, this was, that going forward, when they bring these to us, that if it's going to be on the river, it'd be good to know whether this is potential commercial property. Because, I mean, y'all know what's going on, you know, on the river and different places and development, just to make sure that it fits. I am, I am okay this time that this does fit, you know, with the intent of these conservation easements, but when it gets down on the river, I think we should have more information to make sure that that property is indeed property that should be, should be conserved because we want to protect farmland, of course, and, but there's also, you know, limited industrial and commercial that we've got to balance, so I do intend to vote for.
Right, and this property is pretty, pretty steep, right?
Pretty vaulted.
Pretty steep and wooded. It's not that kind of flat land like down in the riverfront areas where there's a lot of, a lot of economic development opportunities. I think it's a good concern, but this is a, this is just really close to the Richmond Hill Park over there, and so it'll be a neat addition to that protected area over there that's really popular, and I think will fit in really well with the whole future kind of Greenway conservation program to go along with, also, you know, the economic development infill opportunities that makes sense in a lot of areas, too. So it's a, it's a great point. I also just want to echo what Commissioner Frost said. I want to thank the staff and the folks who work on both the Agricultural Advisory Board and Land Conservation Advisory Board, who I think just do a tremendous job and continue to just bring forward these remarkable projects that include, I mean, obviously really special places and working with landowners who obviously just care really deeply about the future of these properties that they, they hold, and they want to hold it in trust for the future, and are willing to, you know, voluntarily give away a lot of their, the value that they have in their property. I mean, if they were just interested in sort of maximizing their own economic benefits for themselves, they could, there's a lot of other options for them. So it's incredibly generous of these families who are willing to participate in this. And so anyway, it's really exciting to see this program just continue to be so successful and build on how successful it's been in past years. And I really, you know, I really, I mean, I'm, I think this is, I think this is probably the, you know, the best local land conservation program in the state of North Carolina. I mean, just for what we put in and what, you know, the financial investments we make for the amount of places that get protected through it. I just, I'm not aware of anything else like it. So, hooray. Great job.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, we're invested $118,000. Who gets the $2 million in this process?
A lot of the $2 million is the value of the easements themselves that the owner- A lot of the $2 million is the value of the easements themselves that the owners will, will give up. So, two of them are 100% donations, and two of them are bargain sales. One of the bargain sales is $400,000, that is private contribution, will be towards, to the owners for purchase of that easement. And then the other $550,000 would be federal and state grants, which would go to the owners for purchase.
So that one person's gonna come up with about a million dollars?
Well, two separate easements, each one 400,000, one 550,000. Again, they're, they're only a portion of the value of that easement. They are making a donation of, of some of the value.
So, our money comes from where, our 118,000?
There, there is money in the Conservation Fund from other projects. Sometimes, projects, for one reason or another, are not able to close. Oftentimes, we have projects that come in under budget, so that money is, is already there.
Well, the only thing I'd like to see is when we do projects like this, the people that gain add back to the, like, the 118,000, so it can go forward again in somebody else's project. So, you know, I know we're paying for the attorney fees and the surveys, but when somebody has a gain of 400,000, no matter how much they've put forward, the tax base has gone down, they're not paying the taxes that they're paying, and I'd like to see some of these people reimburse whatever fund this is, to bring some of this money back up.
I would like to say, as far as, as taxes go, they're already either tax-exempt or in the present use-value program, so their taxation should not change with them being under an easement.
Thank you. Again, I say this, I think, every time, two concepts here, it's voluntary, the landowners are willing to work and do things, give up a lot of properties, as Commissioner Newman said, and secondly, it is the only way that I see this board or any other local board leveraging and, and gaining and taking development rights, not taking them. It's the only way I know that we can get land that will remain the same for our children, grandchildren, and people beyond. Otherwise, it will be developed, it's a good compromise, owners like it. And I, again, commend the staff, and Debbie Trumpy in particular, and, and Carl Silverstein in the back. Thank you so much for looking ahead, and these things take years sometimes. You know, we, we approve them in, in, in a relatively short time, but this, these are years in the making. It's a lot, a lot of work, and we're, we're proud to be partners with you, so thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll call the question. All those in favor of, this was Commissioner Frost, second by Commissioner Jones, I believe, is that right? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then we adopt the Conservation Easement Request at a seven to zero vote. Next, we have Steve Garrison talking about the Charters of Freedom Monument. Mr. Garrison, good to see you, come on up and tell us about it.
All right, good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Director Thickepin sends her regrets that she couldn't be here with you this afternoon. We came to you, if I can have the presentation up? We came to you all on August 5th to present a request to accept a gift from Mr. and Mrs. Vance Patterson to erect a Charters of Freedom Monument on county property. Tonight, we come to you requesting your consent for a final placement of the monument. If it pleases, Commissioners, we're prepared to make a recommendation this afternoon. Mr. Patterson's wish is that the monument be displayed in a location that's highly visible, easily accessible, and very conducive to visiting schoolchildren and their teachers. Location we're proposing is in the approximate area of the County Administration Building Plaza, adjacent to the sidewalk that leads from the county parking deck to the county, to the court facilities.
It'll work.
Yeah, it's good, yeah.
Apparently, I'm going the wrong way, showing you how technically insufficient I can be at times. This is a close-up aerial representation of the area that we bring to you this afternoon for your consideration, I think you'll recognize it.
Near the sidewalk, gotta work.
This is what the proposed location currently looks like. Just add about 50 degrees colder than that out there.
Heard that.
And this is a general visual of the location with a mock-up of the monument in it. Justifications, if I can go through that quickly for you, just for selecting this site include, this is a highly visible location. Everyone entering the court facility from the parking deck, you know, they have to pass this, going to the court and coming back out from that location. The county-owned property is managed by the county, and it's within the immediate vicinity of the courthouse, which is what we want. We want that visual of the monument with the courthouse in the background. Installation will require minimal excavation. Location provides easy access for schoolchildren to be able to see this. Location will permit us to strategically place the monument in a way that does not intrude on the aesthetics and the viewing of the Energy Loop art piece that's in the center of the plaza. And that's all I have for you, so I'm glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
Any question, Mr. Garrison?
Just a comment, I actually think after spending some time with this, this might even be a better, better location as far as, you know, handicap accessible, and it's just, and it's right there near the sidewalk, and, you know, just a reminder to the commissioners, I know they know that, that the cost of this is, all we have to do is prepare the pad.
That's exactly right.
And you've picked a-
That's correct.
Pretty much a level lot, so that, that money is, like, next to nothing, so, and the generosity of the Pattersons doing this in three areas. I think Murphy, they picked Murphy here and Morganton to do this, and, you know, for children to be able to come and, and see something that's on display at, at Washington DC, I'm just really excited about.
Yeah, and the other two are already erected, so they're up and going now.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion to, well, let's see, adopt the recommendation for placement, is that?
That, that'd be great, thank you, sir.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the, the resolution, I guess there's not a resolution, but the placement of the Charters of Freedom Monument as proposed by Mr. Garrison?
Second.
A motion by Vice Chair Frost, a second by Commissioner Belcher, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We will, that passes seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Chair Patterson.
Next, we have city appointment, board appointments, city basketball planning and zoning.
Move.
We have reapportment, and, is there a motion, Commissioner Belcher?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint, reappoint Jim Edmonds.
Okay, are there any other appointments, or any other candidates? All those in favor of Mr. Edmonds, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I will take that seven-zero, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Next, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, there's one vacancy, are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Lisa Wheeler.
Ms. Wheeler's been nominated, any, any other nominations? All those in favor of appointing Ms. Wheeler to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, say aye.
Aye.
That, she is appointed by seven to zero vote. I have a special presentation. Now, I'd ask, I'd ask Commissioner King to come down, please. Well, view's a little different down here. This is Commissioner King's last meeting. He is a, been a wonderful commissioner, he's been a wonderful friend. The hours that Commissioner King has given to this community and this county, we will never appreciate. But I can tell you from someone who saw him almost at every single meeting, every single event that I went to, and a lot I didn't go to, I, I was told he was there. He is someone that has given all to our Buncombe County, and as a token of appreciation, we have a photo that we would like to give to him with the inscription, "Presented to David King, Buncombe County Commissioner, District III." And I would like to give this to David, I would like to, I don't want it to break, I'll tell you what, I'll hold it behind you.
Your record lately's not so good.
I'll be real. Go ahead, Mr. King, any, any comments?
Thank you so much for, for this presentation. It's a lovely reminder of my two years on the board. It's been quite an honor and a pleasure to serve with this board. Very proud of what we've done as a board. We've supported five schools, we've supported jobs in this county and education. We've supported many organizations, and it's been a, it's been good for me to get to know organizations such as Pizzica Legal, ABCCM, and Evelyn Charities, who partner with the county and do so much for the people of this county. And, and without having been on the board, I, I wouldn't be aware of just what does take place and just how much this county does do, and it makes me quite proud. But I'd also like to say that elected officials come and go, commissioners come and go, but the, the real unsung heroes are the 1,400-some-odd people that work at this county, the staff. They are the ones that I'm proud of. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner King. I'll read the announcements, I think there is a, we'll have a motion to go into closed session in just a minute. Announcements, the next regular meeting of the board will be at 6:30 on December, different time, 6:30 on December 1, different day, Monday, following the 6:00 PM swearing-in of the commissioners at, in room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. So we're having a different day and a different time, 6:30 on a Monday. Commissioner meetings can be seen on BC Charter Cable Channel 192, ATT U-verse Channel 99, live on BCTV Channel 192, or on buncombecounty.org during the meetings, or online anytime after the meetings. I think there is a motion for economic development proposals to be discussed, is that right?
Yeah, the legal basis would be General Statute 143, 318, and 11A4 for economic development, just need direction for the staff.
All right, so we, we don't expect any action afterwards, I take it. All right, is there a motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated by the county attorney?
So moved.
Been a motion by Commissioner, Vice Chair Frost, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Friar, any discussion? All those in favor of going into closed session without, with the expectation of no action afterwards, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are in closed session, thank you.